I would like to first thank Clark Summit Borough officials for allowing us to have our meeting here today. Council President and a good friend of mine, Jerry Carey, thank you. Council Vice President, Harry Kelly. Councilman Josh Mitchell. Councilman Robert Shields III. Councilman David Jenkins. Councilwoman Kathleen Simmer. Councilwoman Ronnie Lopez, who I had the pleasure of meeting recently, and she's a wonderful person. Mayor Herman Johnson. And Borough Manager Virginia Keough. Is that correct? Okay. Reading an approval of the minutes. At the time of the last hearing, we did not have the minutes for the meeting prior. So today, I'm going to seek approval of, thank you, thank you, of the minutes from the board meetings on September 15th, 2021, and October 6th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for both of those here meetings?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, sorry.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay, moving on. Resolutions. Twenty-one dash zero two six seven, approving current payables. Brian.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lockwater County is hereby approved the following tables. Lockwater County's general fund numbers three-three-zero-zero-six-six-dash-two-three-zero-seven-eight-five, including total $2,649,284.71. Try to transfer this to the 3,679,211 dollars and thirty-three cents adopted and ready to meet the board of commissioners of Lockwater County held on October 20th.
Do I have a motion to approve the current payable, which I'm assuming everybody has had an opportunity to review?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-one dash zero two six one, authorizing the submission of an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of the county, Lockwater County is hereby authorized the submission of an application in the amount of $283,552 for the Community Development Block Grant non-entitled to municipalities in Lockwater County under the federal fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program as administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And be it further resolved, the county proposes the following activities under the county's non-entitlement application. Lockwater County for the fiscal year 2021, the CDPG program non-entitled municipality, Music Borough, water sewer, $232,513, administration of $51,039. We refer to resolve. The county proposes the following activities under the county's, under the county's on behalf of the entitlement application federal fiscal year 2021 CDPG program, entitlement allocation by a municipality. Archwell Borough, water sewer administration of $125,605. Likely Borough Street improvements administration, $121,058. Clark Summit Borough, single unit residential rehabilitation administration, $105,383. Dixon City Borough, public facilities and other administration, $115,711. Dunmore Borough, water sewer and administration, $202,173. Two-hundred-two-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-three dollars. Jessup Borough, single unit resident rehabilitation and administration, $100,620. Old Forge Borough, single unit presidential rehabilitation administration, $139,992. Elephant Borough, water sewer administration, $105,762. Scott Township, single unit resident residential rehabilitation and administration, $103,099. Taylor Borough, street improvement and administration, $117,800. Truitt Borough, water and sewer and administration, $94,254. Be further resolved, Lockwater County will comply with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 in connection with the above mentioned grant program, serving the needs of low and moderate income residents and eliminating slums and blighting influences. Adopted and ready to meet the board of commissioners of Lockwater County, held on October 20th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon this is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Seck.
Hi, Brenda.
Good morning. This resolution is approving the submission of the FFI 2021 CDPG application on behalf of Lockwater County to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in the amount of home fund $6 million. This is a standard required document for the CDPG program. We do this every year when we submit our applications to the state.
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero two six one?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
If we could just for one minute, I forgot to thank Clark Summit Borough officials for allowing us to put the ballot boxes. It slipped my mind at the beginning, and I didn't want to wait to the end because I knew I'd forget again. So thank you, Jerry, and the rest of the officials for allowing us to place a ballot box here. We really appreciate it. Okay, twenty-one dash zero two six two, authorizing the filing of application for local share account grants. Brian.
Whereas Lockwater County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lockwater County, and whereas Lockwater County has submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies as detailed. Number one, Jessup House Company number two, $150,000 for the purchase of self-impending greenware attic to replace the old, outdated, outdated appliance equipment. And two, Hospice of the Sacred Heart, $92,400, purchase of equipment for patients with family usage in hospice. Number three, Indra Loka Animal Sanctuary number one, $300,000 for purchase and implementation of mobile veterinary unit. Number four, Indra Loka Animal Sanctuary number two, $925,000 for art barn renovations and construction of a picnic pavilion. Whereas Lockwater County does hereby authorize the chair of the Lockwater County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Shared Account Grants, and now therefore be resolved this day 20th, this 20th day of October 2021. That the Lockwater County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized the submission of these applications to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above named entities and their respective projects. Adopted and ready to meet the Board of Commissioners of Lockwater County held on October 20th, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Seck.
This resolution is authorizing the submission of the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program application to Pennsylvania Community and Economic Development on behalf of four additional agencies. In total for this round, Lockwater County has submitted on behalf of two agencies totaling over $3 million in requests. The LSA grant program continues to provide support and enhance community and economic voting for communities and for the projects of the state.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, Indra Loka, that's a multi-county application, is that what? Through Monroe County?
So, it's the five counties, Mr. Monroe. So, for Lockwater County, we actually, the areas, the revenue, the, 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 the five counties, those are in county.
Would they get it?
Do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero two six two?
Motion, second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda. Twenty-one dash zero two six four, entering into a memorandum of understanding.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockwater County is hereby approved and entered into a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging with Life Markets for the COVID-19 Vaccine Incentive Program. Adopted and ready to meet the Board of Commissioners of Lockwater County held on October 20th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon this is the Director of Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Goulish.
This is an extension of the program that we presented about the last year, the vaccine program, the research, the, 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 the vaccine, the, 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 the,[679.04]
Any questions or if anybody from the club wants to add anything, they can do that.
Tracy, why don't you just note the next meeting for them is January 6, 2021, and then prior to that, we can always, under Commissioners of their business, remind people at the board meetings of your meeting, if that helps.
Did you ever replace the young man that used to come to all the meetings? Gerard Helen?
Who?
Gerard Helen.
No, we didn't.
He did a fantastic job. You know, he not only tortured himself by recording the county business that you wanted him to report, he said through the entire meeting with the fights and the boring reports, he was just marvelous.
He's a great young man, and we did try to recruit him to come back. And he's happy, he's working for Neighborhood Works, and he's doing good work there, too. He's a loss, but yeah.
Yeah, the Grant Times no longer has correspondence at all the meetings. The apathy amongst citizens, you could cut it with a knife, you know that if you're an elected official.
Yes.
You've got to find a way to get more community news for these 40 municipalities up to the voters. Elections are coming up a clock screen, and most of the people have no idea what the issues are.
No.
So, I'll get off my, I'm a gadflyer now, I'm not an elected official anymore.
Well, you'll keep in touch with me on that, you know, whatever you need for the meeting, too.
Chris, I'm sorry?
I said, just keep in touch with me and let me know what I can do for the meeting.
Yeah, I'll hear you.
But, you know, consolidating is a big thing with me, so it's a great, good first step, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Dominique, Commissioner Notorianni, Commissioner Schirmack. My name is Keith Eckle, a Newton Township farmer, and I'm here today to, number one, tell you how nice it is to come this close to my farm to the meeting. But I think on a much more important issue, and that is the security of our elections. And I'm not talking about reliving 2020. I'm talking about the most recent primary election, not questioning the outcome of that, but indicating that these commissioners have a responsibility as the judge of elections to make certain that the law is fine. And I think this is a bipartisan issue. I'm reminded standing here, yes, I absolutely am an active Republican, but I have voted for a number of Democrats, and actually, two of the three commissioners seated here, I have voted for in the vote. It's not a partisan issue. It is an issue of election security. The picture that has surfaced in the Grant Times with a gentleman carrying two bundles of envelopes, I can't tell from that picture if they were ballots or not, but my bet is on the side that they were ballots, but I can't verify that. You would know from what was taken out of the boxes, if somebody put their gas or electric bill in there. But it is the law that you must deliver your own ballot. Now, one could argue that perhaps that should be two, husband and wife, my mom, I took care of, well, she took care of me a lot more years than I took care of her. But in those latter years, if we had this voting procedure, I certainly could see that it would make sense for me to take her ballot, but it's not for me to decide. And we're not talking about the number two, we're talking about bundles. And we are committed to making certain that every person that can vote should have that But it is the responsibility, in my opinion, of the judge of elections to make certain that the methodology for voting and the security of that is maintained. It is our most sacred right. It is what makes this nation so different from every other nation in the world. And in this time of division, unfortunate division, I, we should be able to unite in bipartisan faces and commit to making certain that our elections are secure. I have to say, I was concerned, again, by printed comments by the sheriff, and not being critical of the sheriff, but his indication that they didn't have the resources, because I'm ready, to make certain of the security of these ballots or to review the films of them. So I urge all three of you, working together, and I underline together, to make certain that our elections are properly conducted, properly supervised, and give us the security of knowing that that election is done properly. Thank you for your time.
On that note, Keith, I understand that position, and that person was seen carrying more than one ballot, there's no question. I don't think it was bundles, but...
More than one piece of...
More than one.
You can't really say if it's a ballot.
Right, no. But, once you get past that part of it, there are so many safeguards in place to ensure that the election is secure and that it is done properly, that it, no one can stop anyone, like the ballot box argument is absolutely ridiculous. You go to a mailbox and drop off as many as you want, and no one would ever know. Okay, this is a matter of trying to make it easier for the people. It's just a simple thing, they can go to, they can get absentee ballots. But, Donnie Frederickson is the solicitor for the Election Bureau. Frank Ruggiero is the solicitor for the county, and this is not something that we take lightly at all. And we, you know, we're not the judges of the elections, we're the election, we're in charge of certifying an election after everything has been reviewed. It is absolutely, and there are people watching from both parties all day long, so that there are no irregularities. This is something that we take very seriously, and we have state-of-the-art equipment to pay attention to how this works and how it's counted, and people are there to monitor and watch what goes on. And again, I think Donnie might be able to address it better than I, but this is not something that can, it's actually just another continuation of the same nonsense, in my opinion.
I think what Jerry's trying to get is that it doesn't affect the integrity of the...
Absolutely does not.
And, I mean, I watched the video, it...
I did not.
I watched, I mean, first of all, I think we knew, probably new cameras in the county because it's very grainy and hard, difficult to see. There is an exception, it's my understanding in speaking with the solicitors, that somebody can request, request assistance.
Do you want to...
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not getting it out. Assistance in completing and submitting their ballot, whether or not that was done...
That's a written request.
Right, whether or not that was done with regard to that specific gentleman, unfortunately, it wasn't brought to our attention until four months later. We do understand your concerns, we don't believe that it affects the integrity of the process. Beth Hopkins, our Director of Elections, is very efficient, very good at what she does. We did put, when somebody receives a ballot, there is, there are instructions in there about the restrictions of only submitting your own. There's also one posted. Chief Jeffers and I, after the last board meeting, went and had them, sometimes you need something to jump out at you, rather than have a one-page, like eight and a half by 11 with black writing, we put a yellow one that just said, you know, basically you can only submit your own, no exceptions. We do have those posted, and we are taking it seriously, so we understand your concerns. And the problem with the sheriffs reviewing all that is that they are stretched very thin. We have them now, they're going to be covering the magistrate's office, the government center, the courthouse, probation, the prison now we have them out there, the central court building. It's part of the reason why we're having a job fair, is because we need to recruit more sheriffs and other people in the county, so, but we do, I thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate it.
I think it's important, and Jerry, we don't disagree often, but I don't think this is nonsense.
Oh, again, that...
I don't, I think this is, this is serious, and actually, if they weren't ballots, it violated the first part of the law. It's not acceptable to comply with some of the law, you've got to comply with all of it. And that's what I'm saying, and I do think it is a very legitimate issue.
Okay. And I agree, you know, Keith, you know, I raised the question, and I have no problem with our voter registration office, you know, once they get into their hands, but it does go to the integrity of the vote. Why was someone carrying multiple ballots? Where did these multiple ballots come from? It raises the question. I'm not for the drop boxes. The drop box here is open, available 24 hours a day. The door's never locked, that's not part of the deal that I understood. So unfortunately, that's an issue. But, you know, I'm sure I could get my mother and a group of her women friends, and they'd love to sit and watch video and see what goes on. We could get lots of volunteers to watch video, so it just comes down to beyond a reasonable doubt.
Yeah.
I can't say why, what, I don't think we had too many gas bills or electric bills or cable bills thrown in our drop box. It just gives them one more opportunity to do something that's not legal, and if they did that in the post office, then you have a, that becomes a federal offense then, mail fraud, so...
This issue was raised in October, or maybe, was it, yeah, and it happened in May. It should have been raised sooner. I don't know how anyone could have investigated something that happened four months ago, but Jerry, you wanted to say?
You know, again, I'll defer to the attorneys, but when this was first brought up, when Pennsylvania decided that they would allow, and it is legal, to have drop boxes.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's legal.
Yes.
And they can do that, okay? At first, Commissioner Schirmack thought it was a great idea. I had mentioned to him that that's not what your base wants, they're trying to suppress the vote.
I'm encouraging more to vote.
Well, and I am too, and it makes it easier for people.
Absolutely.
The point is, it's disingenuine, it's disingenuine to say that it's a great idea and then criticize it later because your political party's pressuring you.
No, and I don't...
Not you.
Chris, I made the point when I first started, this needs to be the three of you...
And again, we're glad to do it.
And the drop box is a good idea, but it absolutely needs to be monitored as laid out by the state law. I mean, that's what the catch is.
And I think that's where we can get into the, the solicitors can comment on how that system actually works. And it works very well, and we've had no issues at all in Lackawanna County. I can't speak for the rest of the country.
No, no, I understand.
But, in Lackawanna County, how does it work?
Sure. So with regards to our drop boxes, Mr. Eckle, each of our drop boxes is monitored by a camera or a radio component in each of the specific municipalities, and that is in accordance with state law. In a perfect world, I don't know that anyone disagrees here, that if we could physically have someone there, that is not necessarily a bad idea, but is it practical? Not necessarily, and not fiscally, at least right now. Is it in compliance with state law? It is. So in that regard, all we can do is comply with the law. I'm not discounting anyone's arguments, and to your point, I don't know that anyone would disagree with that. The integrity of our election system is critical, and I think we all do the best job we can in compliance with the law to ensure that occurs. One point I just want to raise as an attorney, and I know no one's accusatory here, and I've had this discussion with Commissioner Schirmack, the video is the video is the video, that speaks for itself, but I don't want anyone to rush to a conclusion here that this gentleman did anything wrong, because we don't know, one, what was put in. I think we can presume it was more than one ballot. I don't know if it was two, I don't know if it was three. I didn't, I didn't study it per se, but there are exceptions under the election code which do allow an individual, if properly requested, to assist an individual, i.e., bring someone's ballot to a ballot box if they physically cannot do it, but there are...
Frank, you would agree that's written.
There are criteria.
And I didn't know this until I read the article in the paper.
Of course.
And then I researched the law.
Of course. I just want to make sure, and I know none of us are, but it's important that we state this, because I don't want the narrative to be before an investigation even begins, as one is commenced, as indicated by the DA's office, that there's been something wrong or there's a rush to judgment. I mean, the investigation will ferret out what it ferrets out, but, you know, your points are well taken, but as far as Lackawanna County is concerned, we really do try to follow the law, we do follow the law. And in this case, in which an issue was raised, because we had the video cameras in place in accordance with the law, we were able to see and at least capture that video and have it looked at as it should be. So I hope that helps address some of your points today.
No, and I appreciate you're taking it seriously, I think that's important.
Sure, of course.
It's important to every citizen in the county, and I'm not looking at the country, I'm looking at my county.
Sure.
That's what I'm looking at, and this is the primary, and yes, it's four months behind. Purpose of me being here today is we have an election coming up, and I hope that the three of you serving as the election board will do everything in your power to make sure it's secure, that's all. And I apologize for taking...
That's okay.
Frank, if I may just respond.
Sure.
I agree with everything that you said, but I think we need to add the fact that the law also says that if someone returns multiple ballots without written authorization to do so, those ballots are to be set aside. In this case, I'm not aware of any ballots being set aside. Now, you know, Attorney Frederickson, or Frank, you can tell me differently, but that in itself affects the integrity of the election. If this gentleman put three ballots in, or four ballots, or even two ballots, everything over one should have been set aside. And if we did not have these drop boxes, that gentleman would have either had to put them in the U.S. Postal Service mailbox, which would have been mail fraud, as Commissioner Schirmack said, or he would have had to go to voter registration, he would have had to attempt to hand those ballots in, and he would have been told, you're only allowed to put one in unless you have written authorization and can produce that. By using the drop boxes, there's no way to check whether someone has written authorization to put multiple ballots in, and there's no way to set aside ballots that are put in, additional ballots that are put in without written authorization. So the law is more than just what was stated, it also includes setting aside of ballots that are dropped off without written authorization to do so by the voter.
I don't disagree with that statement or that interpretation per se of the law, but the presumption there is that the gentleman placed inappropriate ballots or invalid ballots into the ballot box. And that's, that's my point.
You're absolutely correct.
Right, so let me just finish, though, in response.
Sure.
Sure. So, in responding, though, to set aside a ballot, you'd have to first deem the ballot to be invalid to set it aside. And so, that's what this process is about, that's what, that's the issue Commissioner Schirmack raised. So if the investigation determines that this gentleman did something that he shouldn't have done, then that's perhaps a discussion we have at that time. But you can't invalidate ballots before they're deemed to be invalid or inappropriate or illegal.
I agree exactly with, exactly what you're saying.
And I understand what you're saying, you're suggesting from the front end that there be some additional safeguard.
What I'm saying is...
I.e. not have ballot boxes.
What I'm saying is that we have to make an assumption that those are ballots, because somebody's putting something in a drop box. There's no way to conclusively determine, other than the fact that part of this drop box process requires a reporting inventory of each box be made on a daily basis when those boxes are empty. That's my understanding of the law, and there's a form that should be filled out. And if we need to do a right to request, a right-to-know request to obtain those forms, then I think that's incumbent upon Commissioner Schirmack to determine whether he wants to do that. So you're right, we're making an assumption that those are ballots, but if we didn't have drop boxes, we wouldn't be making assumptions. We would know because they would be hand-delivered to the voter registration office, and that's where the system breaks down. There's nobody to watch the videos, so what's the point in having video surveillance if nobody's ever going to watch the videos? Commissioner Schirmack never would have known about this gentleman had he not been given an anonymous tip that proved fruitful. So to say that it doesn't affect the integrity of the election, I think is disingenuous, because if they were ballots and if there was no authorization, they should have been set aside. One can say that they don't affect the outcome of the election, and I would have no reason to argue that, because certainly, I don't think the gentleman could hold enough ballots in his hand to affect the outcome of the election. But to say that it doesn't affect the integrity, again, I would humbly say that it's disingenuous as long as ballots are supposed to be set aside, which is what the law says.
And look, I guess we'll have to agree to disagree. At the end of the day, it is not inappropriate to submit a ballot if it's an appropriate ballot to submit, meaning if an individual properly requested assistance and that ballot was put into the ballot box, then we're talking about nothing. And all I'm saying is, we're jumping, and you're jumping, I think, to a conclusion, not that we'll have to assume they're ballots that are placed in the ballot box, but the assumption that those ballots are somehow invalid because he put more than one ballot box, or one ballot in. And that's the concern that I have, that we're creating a narrative that the ballot boxes, you know, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater before there's even been an investigation. You've requested an investigation, my understanding is that the District Attorney's Office is undertaking that investigation, and that'll be what it's going to be. And then depending on however many ballots there are, presuming there's some finding that those ballots were inappropriate or invalid, then yes, we'll have to have a discussion with them. I think to your point, and I, and look, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Notorianni, but the issue at the end of the day that I, that you've just raised as well, is that were there enough ballots in his hand to affect the ballot, presuming those ballots were invalid? I don't think so, but that doesn't negate the discussion that's required. I think it's equally disingenuous to suggest that the ballot boxes are wrong or inappropriate, or that the integrity of the election was somehow compromised before an investigation has even determined that anything was wrong.
Frank, with all due respect, and I know we...
So let's agree to disagree, or we go back and forth for the next hour.
We can agree to disagree, I understand that, but it's impossible with the current system and the security in place to prove that multiple ballots being put in were being put in with authorization. I would suggest that at the least we do is, say, if you intend to put multiple ballots in, that you do so at voter registration, where the authorization can be checked, and that people only use the drop boxes for their own ballots, until we come up with a better way to monitor the security of these drop boxes.
And I think that the, there is a sign that says they can only do that, and we can't control that. And you keep bringing up, it's, you know, it's mail fraud if they put more than one in a mailbox. Do you really believe that anyone is going to pay any attention to every mailbox in Lackawanna County if someone goes there with 10 times that amount? And how they would ever come to that conclusion? They get a ballot from voter registration, they can't just go print a ballot. And it's, again, it's just, it's more of the political nonsense, in my opinion.
Here's what I think, I think we should all talk about it, I think we should lay it to rest right now. I think we should talk about it, see if there's any measures that we can take to, I mean, we did something, I mean, it was something, by putting that neon sign, but maybe we could talk about further measures, but your concerns are very valid and noted.
Thank you.
Can I give this to you? I actually tried to reach out to you regarding the agricultural board, because you are a farmer, and I was unable to reach you, so here's my contact information, and if you're interested, can you call me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hi, Jerry.
I thank you for your time and your time, Keith. We're really, really on top of it here in Clark's Summit.
Thank you.
I want to welcome all our Commissioners and Commissioners down here to our council. And we want to thank you, Tony, for our new council chambers, which we received at Grand, so thank you again for that. But I just want to speak on our deposit. Yesterday, I was here when the sheriff's office was here, they were emptying the box, and the question was, can you put more than one in? There's a sign on the box, our camera is on the box, it's monitored 24/7 by our police department downstairs. Any questions, they can pull the camera up and bring up any issues. It can only be one at a time. There's a lot of them that put them in the box with the stamp on them, and the same thing as Commissioner Notorianni said, the sheriff's office said, you can go to a mailbox and put as many in as you want, but this is the regulation for our deposit box. We've been very successful with it, we get calls from the bureau all the time thanking us for having the box available, and we have had no issues whatsoever. So I just want everybody to feel comfortable that these deposit boxes are very secure, they're very safe, and they're monitored by our police, so with that...
Thank you.
We just hope it can continue, because there's a lot of elderly residents here in the Abingtons, and this has been a real good program, so they appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Commissioner Shermack.
Okay, Commissioner, I don't know, Commissioners of their business.
I would just like to say for Commissioners of their business, so I want to stress the importance of getting vaccinated. I know somebody currently who just turned 47 years old, and he spent his 47th birthday on a ventilator. He was not vaccinated, he's very important to me, and he is actually being trached today because he's been on the ventilator for, you're only allowed for 14 days. He's a fighter, and I'm going to remain positive and say that he's going to pull through this, but he's 47, and he was in good shape, he ate well, he exercised...
this, but he's 47, and he was in good shape, he ate well, he exercised, and he had no pre-existing respiratory issues, and he is really struggling. So I just, number one, everyone please just think of him and say a prayer to whoever you pray to for him, for me. And just, you got to get vaccinated. Like I said before, I'm always in the 2% when I take a medication. If there's like 2% of people will get all these terrible side effects, I'm usually in that 2%. And Jerry and I, and you know it's true, and Jerry and I went and got the Pfizer vaccine, and we had no issues. I intend to get the booster, which I believe we're going to have booster clinics in November, which we'll talk about at some point or whenever. But like I said, if it could take somebody out who's a, this person is also a firefighter. He is strong and young, and he is fighting for his life. And it's a very, seeing him like that really put things into perspective for me. Get the shot, get vaccinated, if not for yourself, for your children, and for your family, and for your loved ones, because watching somebody go through that, it's heart-wrenching. So please just get vaccinated. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
And I hope your friend...
Thank you.
...through this very soon.
Thank you.
And I'm not an expert on vaccines. I have mine, obviously. My family has theirs. I hope that that is the thing that saves everyone, so I do encourage people to get their vaccines. It's just an unfortunate and a very dangerous disease. But on a good note, it's good to be back in this building. My father was a longtime council member here in Clark Summit. I was on the planning commission years ago. I grew up downstairs in this as a junior fireman and learned how to become a first responder, years and many more years than I even want to even think about, but it's nice to see the new room and good to be home, so thank you.
Anything else? I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion. Second.
And a question. Call of favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.